Uh. What is this?
But again.
I have to tell you.
I mean, it's a mix bag.
Brady, do you have a remote on the TV?
Ah, yeah.
I don't know.
That's TV.
It already did nothing. But I think he needs to go back to the screen, the TV, the meeting.
And I think maybe you change the way.
Yeah, exactly, sources, the keys to that.
So.
It's been a full moon, you guys know that, right?
Yes.
It's been acting like a full moon all week. I think you have to go to H, the sources HD line.
Oh, yeah.
They're different, they're different.
Okay.
Someone has to touch the remote.
Yeah.
And all that's on the record. Whenever you want. Oh, are we ready? Okay, please join me in the pledge of religious this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. For our. Sorry, it's just one, our June sixth, uh, regular meeting of the city council, people wait. Kim, would you please hold it? Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Councilor Bettyfield? Underway.
Underway.
Um, Councilor King?
Here.
Councilor Rex?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Selvern?
Here.
And Councilor Watts?
Here.
Oh my goodness, we have a quarter minute. Okay, thank you very much. Um, I would like to make one change to the address since we have our representative here this evening from the sheriff's department, uh, Deputy Upstream and.
Sergeant Beasley.
No, Sergeant Phil. Um, and they have a report for us this evening, so if that's okay, we can start with them this evening. Come on up. I'm so sorry that I forgot to put them on. That's okay, we'll just put them in there anyway. Hi there, how's it going?
Good, good, mayor.
Oh, fine, thank you.
Where can we start?
Okay. Do you, uh, so this is, so the report that Casey's providing right now, they're going through a software check. Okay.
Yes, very good.
Yeah, so this report isn't all DPOA, but the majority of it, I've highlighted the things in blue that are not. The accounts that I put on the cover sheet are from the ones that were all identified as DPOA, except for their statute of law, which he can explain that, but it's, this is generally what it's doing. Um, we're gonna be working when they get their cats, we gotta, uh, but if you have any questions, keep them over there.
Maybe if you were cats, then it's our mobile dispatching, because we came through, you know, our computer essentially. Um, and we have a system that we use for, how many years? Uh, about ten. So, ten years now, we're switching to something brand.
One is more.
Uh, this report also starts on the sixteenth of May, so this is about half to three quarters of May. It's on the fourth of May. So, because we lost all of our data for power through this.
Oh, you lost it all?
We lost all the access to it.
Yeah, so.
Yay, wow, that's.
So, from the sixteenth of May back is not included on this. But from the sixteenth to the fourth of June.
Okay. You've been busy six to sixty. Yes, to the fourth. I bet you're busy before that too.
I was, there was a couple, there was a little, little period that everybody switched over, we all kind of hung out together and huddled and hid and tried to learn the new systems. There was a couple days where we laid, but I was just hoping things would get explored.
Sure.
Um.
Well, one of the things we are doing, um, is talking about, uh, the last six months, uh, after he asked first if they do that. So, um, we were, uh, I think the council, maybe at some point to consider, when we talk about it, then next be what kind of schedule you might like to see. We thought, uh, maybe, uh, a, a ten start and a six lead or seven lead, which would put him closer to the evening hours. It would take away from the morning hours, so, um, we've been discussing that, but I really wanted to get council input on that, so maybe we could agenda, put that on the agenda for the council. But if you want to just think about it, it's something we've been talking about. When did it list from like October? Yeah, six months, six months of October, anything else?
When did we start this, this was?
April?
April, so.
Six months. May, June, July.
Very much.
Um, somewhere around.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any questions for, for sure? Yes, thank you, could you remind how, what, um, how do you classify high media level?
Dispatch assigns that, and I think as far as I know, it's just how important they think it is, and then it sort of, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's like a burglary in progress, that's gonna be high. Um, the citizen contact where someone just has a question about something that's not time relevant, it's gonna be.
We want to understand if it's an automated field when they select the call type and then they enter all the data, get automated, generate a database of whatever they put in, and it doesn't necessarily reflect anything in what we're doing. Um, it just, the field shows up.
Um, with your illegal part, um, if someone's not in their vehicle, do you sweep and ticket or, or?
It's a mix bag right now of how it's been dealt with, um, because it's a lot of important things we're trying to smooth out. Um, but the seawall especially, because it's been more of a hazard issue when people get parked there, they sprint to vans and other vehicles, big long trucks, and they're sticking halfway into land travel. I hopefully I can catch any time to say, hey, you better move, you're not spending the case for most of it. Uh, but I do have ways to try and contact the owner and say, hey, get down here, because at that time, I think it's not gonna do anything to solve the problem, I want the car removed. So, I've been putting in effort to try and deal with the ownership of vehicles.
That's good, always wonderful.
That's how it's been, so far. And I would see that's gonna be an issue from here until.
Do they, yeah.
Yeah.
And I saw an SUV that took up all of the, um, parking spaces that, well, lots.
I've seen that as well, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Those are for us to find somewhere, let's go up on the hill.
Like, um, Deputy, would you kind of just give them a refer of what you've been dealing with, with the musical cars from Sunset Avenue?
So, the musical cars started on North Point, it's almost, let's list it out there, I think there was four in total. Um, got who the owner was, well, a possessor, he owned some of them, some of ours are in. Uh, but he was one who was just parking his slots where he didn't, he wasn't supposed to, and then some signage went up, and he continued to do it, so I got contacted, I said, hey, you have extra days to get these somewhere where they can be. Um, he started out kind of complying, and then he just started moving his cars around the building. Um, and now there's one left on Kent and one left, uh, still on North Point, if trend ahead.
We've been getting complaints from.
Yes, and that's been the ordinance thing, because he's not easily with a park per se, because there's much signs are saying he can't be, and that's where the ordinance stuff that we're still working through is trying to get those vehicles out there.
Which is unfortunate, okay.
But we made progress, I mean, we've gone from four or five down to two, so. Getting there.
Thank you. Brady. So, maybe by July one, we'll pull it through.
Yes, yeah, it's all, everything is historical now, it's going in system, and it's just a matter of filtering and how we need it and getting to him to make a brief.
This is great, though, really thank you, it's making a difference, being you out there today.
Yeah, it's definitely already been busy, and I mean, it's Tuesday today, and the amount of people that were here. It was a lot.
Wait, wait till fourth of July.
Oh, yeah. So, it's just noticeable from two weeks ago, Tuesday.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's crazy, so.
I'm ready.
Did you receive us going to summer, any problems that we, we need to be watching for?
Abandoned.
Like, what are the red flags? I, I mean, we got the incident at bathrooms.
That, which I think has been a true rest, largely in part just by locking about.
We'll finish the address next time.
Yeah, and that's just, I mean, patrol, obviously I go off the early afternoon or afternoon.
Right.
Um, if we need other deputies just to swing down as time allows, um, just to show a little more presence, that's gonna be as time allows for, I know what this is gonna be. Um, again, the problem spot's gonna be the highway right here, it's so much traffic, um.
Do you get help from those people?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'm going to try and drag Trooper Stewart in this next meeting, because he is the one that.
Is he the one?
He's the other one that, earlier the trooper that lives, I think, just in the near, in the area. Um, so, and he's always here. So, one problem spot that I have now is I don't know if there is, if I can fix it. I know it's been an issue, or not an issue, but it's been broad, is people are stopping at these homes, as I remember one of them.
Uh-huh.
It's a trouble spot, because if you stop right there, you cannot see to the south. So, when people are slow going that and they're not stopping, I'm not looking the other way, but I'm understanding why they're not stopping completely. Now, someone's walking down ten miles an hour, not looking out there, and you're still gonna stop, but I don't know if there's some kind of fix.
Yeah.
Something, I have no, I, I couldn't even say what the picture would be, but I know it's gonna suck, but.
I just got a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
Because I come down Collins.
Yes.
Up there. But a lot of times, there's like a, uh, maybe a van down there, but a camper van or whatever, it blocks the view.
And that's in, yes, it absolutely would, but at the same time, any vehicle park right there is blocking the view to the south. So, that's why people are kind of slow creeping out there.
Well, that's, you know, you, you stop and then you make sure it was well.
Yeah.
When I was a pre-boughter, but then it's like.
Yeah, by the time you pre-bought and stopped, well, now you're in the highway, so.
Yeah, did they have them that?
Yeah, so it's one of those things, other than there's a, it's just kind of like when you live.
Yeah, I had a.
Just the county was kind of a park line.
Well, we should.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe look at clear vision, I mean, if there, if you don't have clear vision there, then we need to look at having some kind of clear vision there.
Well, maybe have just a couple of parking spots where you can park.
Then that, then that's something, just something.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate to take away parking spots.
Yeah, just like I've, I've caught myself doing the same thing right there, pointing out, so, well, I'm not stopping, maybe, because if I do, then I'm in the other lane, so.
Yes, Brady, um, have you had any luck on, um, Cook Street clearing off a right away?
Who's that?
Ryan.
Mrs. Neeson.
No, I, that's been turned over to Pete, and I'm waiting, I'm waiting on them.
No.
That was your last tour, she was just. But is there anything happening?
As far as I've seen, I've got a right away.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for being here, I appreciate it, thank you, wonderful. Thank you, I'm looking with the agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda?
I have the choose, uh, that, um, page fifteen. Um, let's see, we'll be going one of the minutes, um, enhancement commission, which is the third I'm down.
Which, okay.
That would be, oh, I'm sorry.
Page fifteen?
Yep, page fifteen, I think the second. Seven minutes, um, where there's widest mentions initially on this thing.
I know that.
And that's all I know.
There was one other change on one of the minutes, I don't have the page number, that Councilor Beasley told me about. For some reason, I identified Tad Nick as Tad Neeson, I don't know why, but I changed his name, so that's been pressed. I spent it on someone. Tom Tad Nick, AKA Neeson.
Yes, I have a question about Tony Jones.
Yes.
Um. So, um, it's actually, uh, a check to you, Kim, the hundred expenses.
Yes, uh. There was a lot of charges for the celebration and recurring things that were on my credit cards, so we didn't, we maxed out. Very enough.
You did, let's push it.
We maxed out on the credit card, so why do you?
Thank you.
You have all versions.
Well, we bought the ten, a few big pieces that just doesn't take long sometimes, if you got these stuff, or plus they were doing some things, buying equipment.
Yeah.
And this is equipment that we can use over.
Yes.
For the other activities.
Is there any other? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Uh, with the amendments.
With the amendments, yes.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll wait a second.
It's been moved to second to accept our consent agenda as presented, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you, Councilor. I'm ready. Sit with, um, sorry, I just saw Natalie, appointment is not part of, um, enhancement commission, is that part of the consent agenda? I did place it on there, but if you want to talk to him, have a interview with him, just second, Mr. Monday is here. Would you like him to come forward?
That's been traditional.
Mr. Monday, would you come forward? I don't see you there, but I will sign you, I will sign you in. You do have a ballot.
Another question?
Okay.
Um, I read your information, you said that you worked for like thirty-one years for a food company?
Yeah, I worked for Mozzarella cheese, like cheese.
Okay, okay, I hate you. All right, I couldn't tell which one it was, that's great.
Yeah, I had my vice, I was like.
Unless you might care, you might like a doctor.
Yes. So, what, what is your interest in the seven and yes?
Well, I'm involved in, I'm, I'm on our land in two thousand and four, moved here, actually, I got here last summer, and always had interest in it since John Rolle took me up there, and here, and here, and the first man. It was like, oh, I just discovered that, you know, something would be great to do.
Yeah. Sounds good.
And just gonna involve this community, if you know, folks.
Sounds good. Where did you move from?
Well, I moved to a few places, but I moved from, uh, last, well, Stockton, California, so. Moved to Chicago very. I didn't.
Quite urban to rural, huh?
Well, actually, yeah, the plan was to, like I said, we bought mine in two thousand and four, because I wasn't staying in, in California. So, I wasn't going back to Chicago, my wife said, no, you go.
You won't have it coming here.
No, we love it here.
Yeah. Any other questions? All righty. Do you want us to still fill out ballots? Starting the process. Okay. And I went through all the trouble, you know, all the, I go on the progress computer, big now. Uh, content expansion will be twenty-seven.
Oh, this one?
Understand, so, I'll send Brady a question.
Same there, okay.
Councilor Beasley, if you want to put your vote in the chat, we can take a look at that, or you can verbalize it if you'd like.
Hi, uh, my, my computer just kicked in again, I lost you for a second, would you please repeat your question?
Yes, sir, um, do you, we're giving the ballots for Todd Monday to join the assignment enhancement commission?
Oh, I'm off for Todd, yes, I've, I've read his resume, I'm, I'm grateful that he has stepped forward, and, uh, please register me as a yes.
Okay, um, seven votes for yes. Can we move that way, except for, um, votes for the candidate? Yes. It's been moved to second to approve the ballots as presented, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? All right. You voted for it. May I ask, if you're voting for it? Councilor Beasley, would you like to vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I put myself on mute, so I, I apologize.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, but we're going to, uh, commission and committee reports, emergency preparedness.
Uh, I have a few things, um, okay. Um, Kathy and I went to a, our emergency training on May thirteenth, Latham County, which was great wildfire. And on May twenty-third, uh, there was a table top discussion about wildfire once again, uh, Latham County. And our next, uh, emergency preparedness meeting is going to be on the twenty-sixth of June at four thirty, it'll be nice, because we'll have our newest member, um, in attendance, and that'll be great. Lindsay, do you have anything?
I don't have anything yet, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I have a question, just now, how did the, I know we're talking about it, I go, oh, but how did the, um, table at the fiftieth celebration, did you get any good input there?
You know, um, I don't think that was the best venue to have that.
Yeah.
Because we had people that would stop by, and they're happy that we have an emergency preparedness committee, but they didn't really want us. Spend as much time. Spend as much time, yeah. You know, they want to go to the food truck or something, and I understand that.
Yeah.
Although, governor, um, was very interested in what we're doing and suggested that, uh, as we get further along with, um, getting cash ready this year, that we should.
That's right, I didn't hear that, that's wonderful. But I think that people, undoubtedly, were happy that we had it, and most people talked to you or familiar that we did have a committee, but, um, they appreciated that. That's a good question, Brady, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, um, Harper Rescue, we, we had a short meeting last Friday, and, um, they are going to go ahead and move forward with securing bids for us to start analyzing, hopefully by the end of August.
They put it out for the, no, of course, yeah.
No, of course, they're, they're putting out for the early August and, uh, close early September.
All our permits are complete.
That market, sorry, that's right, it was the permits are complete, so they were able to pack lineup. So, that's great news. Yes, yeah. Um, House's committee is still not met, but we're gonna be meeting really quickly, I've got lots to attend to here. Uh, Harper, Ted.
I got to start out by saying that I was late for our last meeting. Okay, I'm telling everybody, once I hit about fifty, that's on my calendar, or I hit in front of me, I kind of, that's pace things, so. But mainly, uh, the one thing, one thing important is that we voted on and passed was adding, uh, water and garbage to, uh, mortgage holders. So, they start, they all start footing a bill for that also, or we start footing a bill for that also.
And, and electric?
And electric.
The, well, electrics already?
Some of them, just E and C, R and B.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, for everybody to pitch in.
Is that a flat rate, or is it a bit higher?
I would personally would like to see a flat rate, you know, uh, the whole billing situation with monthly and everything is a bit much, when it's so little to have to pay every month, you know? Uh, I think as a general consensus for the Harper Commission, we'd like to see just a flat rate, you know, just simplify things, you know, make it easier, just because individual readings and everything are a bit much.
Takes a lot of staff time as well.
Yeah, totally.
So, charged, um, on an annual basis with mortgage?
Yeah.
They, they've agreed to present to the council an eight percent increase than with the addition of their rates for electric, water, electric, garbage.
If on top of the.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that was.
That's what we'll, they'll be presenting probably. July?
Yes.
August, somewhere around there.
Yeah. Then would that go into effect if it's passed?
Probably, I'm guessing until next.
I think we were late in doing the, the mortgage over this year, so my car tells me, so she'll include that, she'll bill when we get there. She's been telling people we haven't billed yet, because the, the rates are under discussion right now. So, we'll do, and, and people understand, at least nobody's sales. So, I'd, I'd like to, just one quick, I'd like to ask, um, can you bring it back to the, the group, um, that we have a comparison of after the eight percent increase, how that relates to mortgage rates in surrounding ports of Florence and Newport, Winchester Bay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll add that to my notes.
I, I know the pedestals will be a lot less, um, if, within the new dogs, that they don't have meters.
Okay, Kim, is any part of this in our budget, this increase? It's not factored in, but I can make that adjustment before I bring it back to you on the twenty-sixth, seventh, twenty-sixth.
Could be a pretty significant improvement.
Do you have a, a specific time and date, what, you have a budget meeting, you get a straight chance?
Yes, um, I'm sorry, Councilor Watts, everybody see, I wasn't sure about Councilor Bettyfield, but most people were okay with Monday, the twenty-sixth, and it'll be at five thirty after the emergency preparedness. I'm so sorry about that, Councilor. Okay, anything else for Ted? All righty. Thank you so much, lovely, we're making progress here. Anyone from Parks or City? No? Uh, Wendy?
I don't know if there's anything I can tell you, although you don't already know.
Like, why we get the building permit? Manager's information from the staff, and then the other questions?
Yeah, that seems to be working out okay, huh?
Yeah.
Guess that's the other big synopsis, so, um, yeah, last meeting, or our next meeting, I think, will be next week, so, since our last one, we haven't done anything, obviously, and, um, I think, uh, I mean, I, I haven't seen an agenda come up yet for next week's meeting, but I think we'll be taking a closer look at some of the, uh, quality of life ordinance ideas that we've been kicking around, I think, and, uh, whatever else lines up on the agenda, which will find out soon, but anybody has anything for me?
It looks like there's a lot of building activity.
It's the season.
I'm sneezing, Eric.
We're good?
Any other questions?
So, I do want to ask you about your shirt, the way I can do it off the line.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your bringing here. And enhancement? What is on the table this evening? Okay. Anybody with public comments this evening? There is none. I'm so sorry.
Oh, yeah, from John.
I need to print it, can you give me a minute? Um, there was something that Councilor Bettyfield asked to submit, unless Councilor Bettyfield has it and wants to create it.
I could do that.
I do have a public, not comment, but question.
Sure.
If it's the time.
She's grabbing that.
Um, we're not signing anything, are we?
No, I, I've got you.
Okay.
I can't, apparently function about car, let me do.
I know, it is. Um, my question is regarding the urban renewal district expansion that, about an hour ago, uh, what was the, what was the property that was being supposedly incorporated into that and?
Go to the one south of Tyler Raves, that property that, um.
Okay.
Right next to the car.
Okay, gotcha, so, okay. Gotcha, okay, all right, that was my only question, I just wasn't sure where that was or what it was on the slate for, so.
Okay, so, the public comment, I think, just, um, I guess I'm asking for it to be put on the agenda, it's, um, a member of the, um, he lives right around the gas station, it's John Rich, and it has to do with Daniel's sticker holder.
I can explain it if you want.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So, um, Mr. Rich has reached out, he had a discussion with Carter regarding his boat launch. He filled out before last year, he got out from this year, this year, though, he put down, he paid the, I don't feel like I'll, so he put down three items, he put down a sea, a sea doo, kayak, and a boat. We, he says that he was told that all he had to do was take the sticker and put it in his car, and he could launch anything all year that he wanted. We said that's not the case, that the stickers are designed to be put in your car, put on your boat, you know, or just, they're not designed to be one's catch-all. Um, but he's arguing, he's submitted a resolution, the resolution has very squishy language, um, that really needs to be addressed, and I don't have it in front of me, but it does. It actually supports his position, except that we have the whole deal with past practice and consistency and. It actually supports his position, except that we have the whole deal with past practice and consistency and all the other courts. But he's an attorney, so he will probably want to pursue this more with an argument that he should be allowed to do this. My recommendation is to have the Harper Commission discuss whether or not they feel what we changed there, or the council can. If the council wants to say, yes, a hundred dollars, you can latch any number of things, we know that's not really the intent, so we wouldn't want to update that ordinance, I mean, the resolution, if there's any question. We did talk to, uh, Mr. Rick about it today, as based on the Harper Commission. Do you want to come up?
Sure.
Does anyone want to come up? I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I, I don't think there's a point in having a sticker for a boat if you can interchange the sticker to each boat. You know, and I'm sure everybody at the fellow Harper Commission would agree on that, so.
Well, I'd.
That's why you have the sticker for the boat, if you can, yeah, put it anywhere you want.
Yeah.
Then, then we'd actually have people exchanging stickers, ever people exchanging stickers, is that the same, right?
So, um, I, I thought that was, I mean, maybe it's not clear in the resolution, but it might have been clear in our discussion leading up to it.
The ordinance itself speaks to one vessel. It says clearly on the form, you need to attach the sticker to your vehicle and your, or the trailer in the, in the boat, or vehicle and trailer, anyway. It says you're, you're clearly supposed to attach, you get two stickers that have the same number, and you're really supposed to attach one to one thing and one to the other, right? But he said he was told last year, he didn't say by who, I thought he meant the Harvard Master or Assistant, that he could just put it in his truck, he'd be fine, and I, I'm not sure.
So, um, I mean, as it is, a hundred dollar years are real, um, uh, it's a very low price. But can we just clarify our intent now, or do we have to take it back or?
I think if you want to, you can go ahead and motion to clarify your intent and say that we can, we need to fix the, correct the resolution, but this is being promoted, Council.
Yeah, I think we should do that, and that's the.
Do we need to, we need to fix the resolution?
Yes. Because I think the motion can be to clarify our intent now, and to direct staff to correct.
Right. Coming.
Your pronouncing, okay, so, um, help me, people, the motion would be is to clarify the intent of the council that the, um, the annual fee for, uh, vessel launch, uh, pertains to one boat, um, and, um, and the trailer that carries.
Currently, it says vessel, not vessels, so.
Vessel. Right, it does, it's a vessel.
But if just, if there is any, if, obviously, you know, he's looking at that, who these attorneys do, so, so, um, I don't know if that motion, I mean, that motion was clear. Anybody else want to help me clarify that, anybody? Yeah, I'm thinking like each individual vessel, you, 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 it's, it's.
Well, one boat, one, one boat, one.
Or sticker for the annual, and to direct staff to, um, clarify that language, um, in the ordinance.
What were the other vessels in this?
The boats that we need.
A kayak and sea doo.
We need to discuss.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved in second by to clarify one vessel. And one sticker. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, well, this wasn't on the agenda, uh, it's hard for me to understand or follow what's going on unless we have a printed report from the, from the city recorder. Uh, but since this motion is going to lead to that, I believe on the next agenda, I'm for it. Uh, I just don't like the way this was presented because it doesn't give us an opportunity to know what is going on. We don't have the ordinance in front of us, I don't believe, I didn't see it in the packet. And, uh, it's just, uh, I don't think this is the way it should be presented, but.
How do I think we just, Ca- I, Council's correct, because I really was thinking that this would just be a public comment and that maybe what the staff, the council could do is direct staff to, to bring something to the next meeting by the time it's language, yeah.
But I don't think it hurts, I mean, I, I understand what Pastor Beasley's saying, that's normal way we do things, but, um, I don't really want to get this out of hand. If one person does it and then things become, that some other people can do that too, so, um.
But I really think we should have the full resolution in front of this committee.
Absolutely, well, we will have the full resolution, right, it's just, uh, clarifying our intent, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there a problem with going forward with this motion right now about clarifying what we need?
I think what he's, I think maybe what he's saying is that it wasn't agenda-ized, so really, one of those things where you really shouldn't take action on. Um, we could have added it as an agenda item, as long as the time and consequence were. So I should have had to do it that way, we were gonna make some kind of decision, otherwise, the simplest thing would be, would you simply say, we're directing staff to bring, to investigate this issue and bring us a reported resolution next week.
I'll withdraw my, my motion, but I think from the discussion, I think we understand our idea.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ted. Eric, we are in, uh, public comment portion, are you here for public comments this evening? Um.
You have to kind of figure it. This is Carrie. I am here for public comments. So, um.
Say your name.
Carrie Lowering.
Okay.
And so it's about, um, coming with the Orches, the Southern Resident Community, um.
That's on the agenda later.
Right, and I, uh, my understanding, do I talk about it now or after the presentation?
When we're doing the public committee, right, when she does, when she does.
Okay, okay, because I was unclear when, or should, um, shut them down or, or later, so.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so it's coming up soon.
Excellent point, after the presentation, but I'll, I'll jump to you next.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be great. Okay, any for the public comments? Okay. Uh, we're going to the second reading and adoption of ordinance, uh, three-three-seven dash twenty-three, restricting use of single-use foam EPS foam. And, let's see. Is there a motion to accept reading the ordinance number three-three-seven dash twenty-three by title?
Move the, we're just, uh, title.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments? Thank you, Council. Uh, and, and an ordinance amending the Depot Bay Municipal Code by adding chapter ninety-six, restricting the use of single U-use EPS foam food service containers made with plastic and foodware, with added something or, or something substances, sorry about that. Can you split those up, um?
Here, first, here, okay.
Okay. I would never comprehend, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, oh, and it's the way.
For, for, for all.
On public property to the Depot Bay Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Okay.
This was updated from the last meeting to add that, uh, plastic board language.
So I now open the, uh, floor for public comments on this ordinance. We know public comments, I will close the hearing for public comments and for the discussion by council on the ordinance.
I appreciate the, uh, further updating ordinance right here.
Okay. If this is on hearing, yes.
Mayor, I want to thank the city council for bringing this up. And, uh, I, I want you to know that I am on board with you in doing, environmental actions or laws or ordinances that move our town forward, that actually, that have an actual impact, uh, on our environment. And, and so thank you for doing this, I think this is a great ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to accept, um, ordinance number three-three-seven dash twenty-three as presented? Would it over?
Or the next for this?
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the ordinance as read into the record. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know, wait. Thank you. And what was the EPA's came back through, uh,
Products.
What, what was that, I'm trying to figure. That presentation that, how, for now, just to give you some recent legal law information that's coming out, that's been approved about the types of things that would be, uh, the developers adopting that would be permitted in within the state to see how we fit into that, and we ended up plus enough, our program basically was so big, and I'm sorry about that, but it was just information off you guys somehow about what's been recently happening with the state.
We're gonna have to, like, um, testing go back.
Yes. A whole bunch of things is coming up change.
Prehab. It seems like these are very, very dangerous compounds and, um, at really low levels, so, but have we ever, um, had any positive readings for, you know, the chemicals?
Uh-uh, not for people.
Has it been tested?
It has.
Yeah, we have a really good water source, we don't keep it that way. It's frightening, and cancer-related stuff.
Yeah, we just recently have our consumer confidence report finished, and it's gonna be up on the website this week. So, yeah, it all came back and none detected except for, like, pouring, which isn't normal.
All right, thank you, Green.
Sure.
Um, let's move on to our fiftieth, fiftieth, final. Talk about our fiftieth anniversary celebration, what a joy, wasn't that fun? I had so much fun, it was just, you could tone down the wind a little bit, but, um, I, and Chief Depot was so grateful. I forgot to bring the picture tonight, and, uh, Kim, have you distributed the pictures?
I posted the, uh, pictures to Dropbox, drop.
Okay.
Uh, so send everybody links, but if you need, sorry, you need the link again, I can send it. It has been fuzzy because we kind of blew up the file, system puts all the pictures, so add remove the old ones and pretty, but I can resend you the link.
Okay, so maybe we could send it somewhere.
Maybe I would.
All right. Can we put it, can we put them on our website?
We can, but it's a lot of pictures, it's a hundred and fifty-six pictures.
So maybe, thank you.
And I think some of them could do a piece of that one.
Yeah.
What I, uh, was gonna do was add some of the pictures, just a subset, you know, fifteen, two thousand, slideshow.
Oh, yours is wonderful, yes.
And then set and then make that available.
Oh, good, okay, that would be great, and everybody, it just turned out so wonderful, I think everybody, uh, had such a good time, and it's too bad the music didn't go over so good with our flute and the big, so far, yeah, yeah.
Their main, their main.
Yes.
But, uh, and Chief Depot was so grateful.
He's.
He turned to me, he says, nobody has ever done anything like this for us before, so no one. And it just brought tears to my eyes. There's a great picture of he and his family behind the sun, and there's also a great one of, of us, and so what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring the picture of he and his family, uh, to, um, sit to him along with the declaration. And then if we can, I'll get the other one with all of us and he, and we could all come in to the office and sign it, I mean, so we'll send that off soon. I've also compiled a, a complete list of everybody to thank, our, our food trucks, our cake, those cakes were fabulous, they were, uh, so good.
We'll send off the, tell me which pictures, if you want to come in tomorrow, let me know exactly which pictures, and then we can send them off to get them nicely printed for us, sorry.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So that they'll look good that way.
That would be nice, yeah, just the one at the end of the.
Yeah, you can have one of those frames I bought.
Oh, that would be great, oh, that would be great, so, anyway, yes, comments?
Oh, I was just gonna say, the thing that I enjoyed mostly about it is that everybody was so happy.
Yeah.
You know, and you saw people that many hadn't seen each other in a while, and they were catching up with people. And on that, uh, retaining wall that was over by where Emergency Preparedness Table was, and people would just sit there and talk to people as they went by. Uh, the weather was often cold and windy, but, you know, that was, that was the least of our problems, but it was just, uh, great, happy kids, the playground, and, and neighbors for kids, and it was just a very good feeling, yes.
I think we had about three hundred people did it, right?
At least, you know, and the food trucks were busy, I got, um, I got a thank you text from those food trucks. You know, thank you, uh, for, uh, including them, so, my concern was that they were going to make money, because they were taking a risk leaving their hot spot on Saturday to come to us, and they took that risk, and I was really happy that it worked out for me now. So, um, um, I like the idea of thanking people, your volunteers are awesome, guys, totally, yes, thank you, so.
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah, yes, thank you, yes.
But I found out, I ran into Bill and Peggy Sal, at, um, Pacific Lodge.
Yeah.
And, um, I said, I thanked them just personally, uh, for, you know, uh, arranging the place, um, and I found out, I thought they stayed in Tote's Lodge, I didn't know, um, they, they called up one of the, um, vacation rentals that they manage and asked the guy if he could provide a discount, the guy said, I'll just give it to them, you know?
So that was real, and so I thought they're.
Oh, I thought you said they always love to, their hotel.
Well, no, how.
Right on the ocean.
No, 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 that's, obviously, I would have done.
That's a nice place, go back, see pictures of the blue.
They were, that was, the people, that's great, Chief was amazed because he's, he's just, never had any, that's really, of course, yes.
Yes. Yes, Councilor Beasley.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will, I want to thank you for the opportunity, uh, to debrief this celebration. And I wish to congratulate you and the councilors that worked on this on bringing it to a successful conclusion. Uh, but I would say that difficult and time-consuming as it was, it would have been far more difficult or not impossible without a city checkbook to pay for it and the labor of our city staff to make it happen. As I looked over the minutes attached to tonight's agenda, I was dismayed of time devoted to this event by the city council when we perhaps could better serve our constituents by dealing exclusively with pressing business and infrastructure issues and council goals, of which there are many. I really hope this brings to a conclusion further efforts by the city council to engage in these types of off-chart, of off-chart matters. Uh, please know that I will continue to support you all and be your good friend, uh, in efforts to make our city and our harbor financially sound. Thank you.
And it's too bad you weren't there to see the joy on people's faces as they celebrated being together again, and I had a resident come up to me and he said, I'll see you in fifty years, Gabby, this was so much fun, so thank you for your promise.
That's wonderful, I did, I did see the photos, Mayor, and they were, they, the photos were absolutely terrific.
I know, they're gorgeous. Any other comments, please? And thank you for the volunteers, I need their names and addresses.
Those from Keston.
They have it, and then she brought extras, and she had me just pretend that we don't have them, that is. Okay. Um, okay, moving on now to, we've got a proclamation before, so everyone had a chance to read it, I think I will read this into the record then. Um, proclamation, whereas the Southern Resident Orches, the Orches are culturally, spiritually, and economically important to the people of Oregon and the world, and whereas despite legal protections for nearly two decades, the population continues to decline and is critically endangered with only seventy-three individuals left, individuals left. And whereas the Orches' survival is dependent on healthy and functioning ecosystems, and whereas over twenty countries, dozens of local communities in the United States, and several tribal, tribal governments have recognized that nature has inherent rights and that human society has a responsibility to protect and steward nature in a manner consistent with our interconnected relationships, and whereas the rights of the Southern Resident Orches include, but are not limited to, the right to life, autonomy, culture, free and safe passage, adequate food supply from naturally occurring sources, and freedom from conditions causing physical, emotional, or mental harm, including a habit yet degraded by noise, pollution, and contamination. Now, therefore, the city council, the City of Depot Bay, reclaims on the sixth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, the City of Depot Bay's. The city of Depot Bay supports and urges action by local, state, federal, and tribal governments to secure and effectuate the rights of the Southern Resident Orcas and of the ecosystem upon which they depend. Are there any comments on the proclamation?
Are you taking your public comments?
Yes. Do you want to speak to us about the proclamation?
Yes. Okay. Um, thank you very much for, um, so Rema contacted me and she brought, um, for this proclamation that we were doing. And she did not realize at the time that in the nineties, I have worked with the Southern Resident Community of Orcas. I worked in San Juan with Ken Balcom, who was my mentor and, um, who was someone passing personally. And, um, they are doing, doing work. Now, the thing is, is these orcas go past Depot Bay in January and February. I have photographed them during that period of time. And, um, you know, as soon as I did the photographs, I worked with many other whale agencies and I cast those photographs on. And so, um, one year, we had a cat, an alpud, being born and I was the first one to document it. And then that was going past in January that year. So, these orcas, um, are facing many problems. Um, primarily salmon, um, they eat primarily king salmon, shiitake. And the Snake River has many dams on it, that's preventing, of course, the salmon from coming here. And so there, there's one really important thing. So, what Rema wants to do, from my understanding, and she could, she'll let you know more. But, um, is, she wants Depot Bay, since we're the whale watching capital of the world, to just say, yes, we understand orcas as a community, uh, that have inherent rights. Um, I can tell you that orcas do tunnels. Um, a very good friend of mine, um, she worked with some of the residents of fish eating orcas and she had seen a female having, um, a stillborn calf. And I'll show you my models to show you. And she held that stillborn calf on an ashram and nineteen other pod members surrounded her. And every pod member came and gently touched the stillborn calf until every single one of them had, had touched it. And then she, she held the calf a few more minutes and then let it go in that sink. And I mean, having worked with these whales for years, um, they, they're very family oriented. Um, I think it would be good for us, being the whale watching capital of the world, to say, yes, we support that. It does not affect the whale watching. You know, some people say, well, you know, is that gonna affect us? It just puts us out there like we're known as the whale watching capital of the world. We have, you know, great whales, grades. And you have heard about the young compaq that's been around the last four days. We have probably all two young compaq, that's, he's all over the place. And, you know, we've had orcas, so many orcas transients primarily. And so, so I think it would be a good thing, you know, I think it would put us, um, on the map again. Um, and, and personally having worked with these orcas and, and they're declining. They, they'll probably die out within the next fifty years maybe. Cause there, there's inbreeding that's occurring and, you know, they, they're, they're just dwindling out. I mean, they're half of what they were when I worked with them in the nineties.
And that wasn't very many then, if it's seventy-three left in, in the entire world?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's the Southern Resident Community. San Juan Islands, Washington is their primary area. But like you said, they do go faster. So, did anyone have any quick questions?
As far as I understand, they are going to be removing some dams, right, to try to restore the salmon runs?
There's, that's what they're trying to do. They, they're, they're supposed to be. Um, and we're hoping it continues. Because the more, the more dams that are removed, the more should know that can come down and, and be done. And they only eat, you know, I would say ninety-nine percent of diet pieces of shrimp and salmon.
Is it eating the cravatal babies?
Those are, those are transients.
Transients, oh.
So there's two major groups. There's the fish eating ones. And also the Southern Resident Community, JKs and Ls in our area. And then there's the transients. Now the transients, like they, those ones ate the baby calf a few weeks ago. Um, transients are doing great. I mean, their, their population level is going like this. So if you would look at charts, the transients are going like this, the residents are going like this.
So this is strictly for the.
This is strictly for the fish eating, the, the residents, the, the residents around the salmon islands. Which also.
How do you tell the difference?
You're a good point. Okay, so one of my books I wrote shows this, but I'll also explain it briefly. So first of all, transients typically are in smaller groups. They're usually in groups of one to maybe up to ten. Like last Friday, we had one single male, um, and then Saturday morning, there were three. So they're in small groups. They eat seals, sea lions, and other whales. Um, there's saddle patch, like, not many people know this, but having worked with orcas for so many years, um, if you look at a, um, saddle patch behind the dorsal fin, there's this white area. The saddle patch of a transient is much greater. Um, I almost brought a model to them, but if this is a dorsal fin of an orca, if you go from the apex down, the saddle patch will be beyond the midpoint of that. And the, the bigger, whiter saddle patch is always a transient. Residents on the other hand are in larger groups, usually fifteen to, they used to be, alpids used to be sixty-two members, but now they're way down. But big, bigger groups, they're, they're fish eaters, primarily salmon. Um, and their saddle patch is much smaller. So again, from the apex, if you go behind, like if this is the apex of the, the dorsal fin, you'll, it will own, it won't even encro, um, encroach upon the midline. And sometimes they're blacking the saddle patches. So, kind of subtle differences, but, um, I'm actually working with some orca researchers in Monterey Bay, um, as a proof of dive book with the orcas. And so, this will include all of our orcas. Um, I'm full of tracking them here, giving my data down to them. And so, and I share my data everywhere, so. Any other questions?
That's wonderful. Yeah. We do have two people on line here, let's see.
I'm here.
Okay, my, my, my care is commissioned. Yeah, okay. Any other comments from online?
Yes, very much Heather.
Oh, Heather?
Heather, we got a question.
Yes, Heather.
Well, let's.
Uh, I, we'll have Kate call them in order. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Kevorkian, first you may reply. Can you get on mute?
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Chris Kevorkian. I'm founder of Legal Rights for the Salish Sea. I want to thank each of you for taking the time to consider this proclamation, recognizing the inherent rights of the Southern Resident Orca. I appreciate that Rema brought this to the council and that Carrie was there to answer questions about the Southern residents. We're working hard in the Pacific Northwest to save this beautiful, unique species of orca that means so much to the people here. Their numbers continue to decline, as you noted, that there are only seventy-three remaining in the wild. Tequeta remains held captive in the Miami Sea Aquarium and has been there for over fifty years since being captured off the coast of Woodby Island. In Washington State, we've had five cities and three counties sign similar proclamations recognizing the inherent rights of the Southern residents. I hope that you will be the first city in Oregon to do so. We remember our dear pod father, Ken Balcom, and his words saying, for us to be alive on this planet with those amazing creatures, it's a gift and we're killing the gift. I hope that you will sign this proclamation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Rema was the next to request to speak. You can unmute.
Mayor.
Thank you for your time. Hey, um, I was told I could give a presentation online, so I made a little five minute presentation. They said I could have. Um, am I welcome to do that?
Uh, she wants to share a screen.
Yes.
You want to share your screen? She wants to share your screen. It's a short presentation.
Is that okay?
Let me see what I can.
Is that good?
She should be able to do it.
Can you see that?
Yes, yeah. Aw. Is that a transient?
No, actually, I believe this is Tika, who is a Southern resident in the K Pod. So, um, hi, my name is Rema Coons. I am a resident here and a board member for the citizens of Better Lincoln County. And first off, I want to say thank you for allowing me this time. And to also, um, say I really wanted to be there in person, cause this means so much to me. But I have chemical sensitivities, so I need to do this by Zoom. And I want to further thank you for having that Zoom capability available for people with disabilities like myself. So thank you for that. So tonight I'm gonna talk about, um, a little bit more about what's already been spoken about, um, the inherent rights of the Southern Resident Orcas. So, a little bit more about the Southern Resident Orcas. They are found off the British and Columbia, um, British Columbia and the Washington State and Lake City as well as off the coast of Oregon, right path is here, like Carrie was saying, and down to Northern California and Monterey. So I was introduced to the Southern Desert residents when Taliqua made the headlines in twenty eighteen. So you might have recalled, her calf had tragically died shortly after birth. And Taliqua was carrying her calf for seventeen days and nights. She logged a thousand miles carrying her baby in a heartbreaking display scientists refer to as the hour of grief. I'm sorry, the tour of grief. And as a mother myself, I, I can only imagine the raw pain that she went through. But she inspired me to learn more about the Southern Resident Orcas. And again, um, like Carrie was saying, we, I learned they have their own dialect, their own culture, and they're referred to lovingly as vegetarians, because they do only eat fish, not mammals. And they have a deep, they, they've been, uh, living harmoniously with the indigenous people since time immemorial. And they have a deep social, cultural, ecological, and economic significance. And there are only seventy-three wild orca remaining tragically. And the federal and state laws recognize the population as being risk, being at risk of going extinct. They are a keystone species and the Southern Resident Orcas play an irreplaceable role in our Pacific Northwest, um, ecosystem. So, um, what does it mean when we say legal rights for the Southern Resident Orca? What, what does, what does that mean? So it means that despite decades of environmental legislative and policy protection attempts, the Southern Resident Orca population is continuing to decline. So Earth Law Center and Legal Rights for the Salish Sea are calling on local communities, state legislators, and governors to recognize the inherent rights of the Southern Resident Orcas and the ecosystems upon which they depend and to take immediate actions to protect and restore the orca rights. So the rights of nature law recognizes that nature is a living being and a rights bearing entity. Human rights, well-being, prosperity, it's all embedded and dependent upon nature. Rights are important to rebalance our relationship with the natural world and to encourage a shift from human centered to earth centered governments. So how will this affect Depot Bay? Well, by signing the proclamation, the city of Depot Bay will be the first city in Oregon to take the bold action to help save this critically endangered species, uh, species. This proclamation is non-binding, meaning it will not impact fishing or the whale watching industry. It is a good faith effort on behalf of the city to recognize a beloved species that is needed as much support as they can get since they are critically endangered. We are showing that we care about the health and well-being of our neighbors on land and on sea. And admittedly, we are a whale-loving community and we have built a reputation, an economy, and a, and a city surround that love. So as the whale watching capital of Oregon, I feel our city should be the first to support this proclamation. As, um, Chris already pointed out, five cities and three counties in Washington State have already signed. And we're hoping Depot Bay will be first in Oregon. We imagine the publicity we're gonna get when we do this, if we do this. The, the amount of tourists seeing how much we value the Southern residents. And when people visit Depot Bay to visit the whales and watch the whales, they'll know that they're spending their dollars in a place that supports a cause that's near and dear to their hearts. So, I thank you and whales, thank you.
Thank you. We also have a, um, Heather Nicholson, if she wants to unmute and speak.
Yes, hello, I'm Heather Nicholson. I'm dialing in from San Juan Island and I apologize. I, I do not have any written statement. I'm in the garden and having a garden crisis with deer eating it thing and fences falling apart. But there's nothing more important than, um, recognizing the, uh, the Southern residents and the situation they're in um, because of us humans and, uh, they, you know, our perception of them has really changed over the decades. It wasn't that long ago when they were being captured and shot at. Um, and so I think, uh, it's just a new day and a new time. And it's, uh, time for our systems to catch up with that and, and reflect our values and set us back on, on a better course. And we don't really have that, that bridge and that footprint yet. And this is a, a really wonderful step in, in that direction. It's non-binding, um, but it reflects our sentiments. And, um, I just really appreciate all of the information, uh, that others provided here today for them. These, these whales, which are actually large dolphins, um, are loved the world over. And if we can solve for them, we will be solving, uh, a lot of other issues that need attention as well and that ultimately will allow humans to thrive at the same time. So, I strongly support the adoption of this proclamation and appreciate all of the effort, um, by everyone present. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all we show. Are there any other comments on the proclamation? Councilor Beasley?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I want to thank, uh, Dr. Kevorkian. I want to thank Carrie Newell, a good friend of mine. Rena, thank you, and Heather Nicholson, thank you for coming forward and, and bringing this. Uh, I'd like to make a few comments on this, uh, proclamation. First of all, uh, I would like to say that we have a chain of command in this, in this city. And I think that we should honor that. And, uh, all things marine should go first through our harbor commission. Because it's comprised of people who think about all things marine, who are engaged commercially in the charter fishing, uh, and the whale watching, and the crabbing businesses that would be affected by this resolution. So I think it's not just us tonight that's involved in this. We have other people in the city that need to know about this. And as far as I know, this just appeared on our, uh, agenda tonight for passage or refusal. And I don't think that's the way it could be. I think our, our harbor commission needs to take a look at this before we make a decision. We know little about this issue as a city council, except for the fact that I think we all know that the sea is already heavily regulated and protected. Uh, I am totally for environmental efforts that, that have results. And I think that we need to, for example, clean up our town of the cigarette butts that clog harbor outlets and eventually go out to the sea and harm the whale population. I think we need to be worried about the dog feces in the park, because that goes into the water and affects the contamination uh, that our fish and our, in our whale. So I am for, uh, poll. So I am for, uh, positive things, but mainly, I want to see this thing go to our, our harbor commission first because this is an open-ended resolution that invites, in, in my mind, especially in paragraph five, uh, additional regulations. Uh, and there are people that, uh, as, as much as we want to preserve the whale-watching industry, there are people that would like to see it in because they feel that it is a, an impediment to the whales, who have many impediments from, from, you know, the new, uh, wind turbines, uh, to crab pots, et cetera. But it's a complicated issue, and we need to give this to our, our harbor commission before we, who are essentially uneducated, we don't know a transient from a resident, let's give it to the harbor commission first and see what they have to say about it. Thank you.
Is there any other discuss, discussion? Yes, can. Yeah, I, I think, um, as has been said and as agreed, there is, it is non-binding. And I think it really is appropriate, as well, whale-watching capital of, um, of Oregon, to take this step. It's symbolic, but symbolism is very, very important. And, um, I would be proud to have this, us be the first, um, city in Oregon to embrace this. And the city council is the decision-making body, and I don't believe that this sort of issue has to go through the harbor commission. So I would move that we would adopt this proclamation, um, as read. Second now. Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the proclamation as read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So at this time, uh, we've been asked to sign the proclamation and have a picture taken with all the councils signing it. This was asked of, why was it, uh, Kurt, Dr. Borkin? Uh, let me give myself on this, can we, do you have yours?
Yep, right here.
Okay. So if everybody understands.
If, uh, if Dr. Bork, Borkin, if you want to put your, uh, email in the chat, please make sure you get a picture.
I will do that, thank you very much.
Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Let me do one more. A little closer.
One, two. Brady. Alright, good. Okay, that's nice, that's nice, you did good, okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here this evening and bringing us to our ten minutes. Uh, moving on to, we need an authorization. Uh, for Kim to sign, has everyone read this, or gets information about the sign in, in, uh, or, uh? Any, so kids here this evening to answer questions about the sign? But also we're doing right now is, um, we're not doing, we're gonna just ask permission from the council, uh, to sign a, uh, permit application, is that correct?
That's correct. The only, uh, before you use authorization as the property owner to sign the application, right?
Right.
And sign, okay. And I just, I would also mention that, Mr. Petry, he's a property owner, he has on, so you get, I'm not sure if he was supposed to speak, but.
So, um, from what I understand, um, without assigning, because it's on our public right-of-way, that they would not be able to make application, right, for the permit, right? So my interest is, um, if we do want, um, sign, um, that we make it clear that, um, uh, that, that, that our signature does not, um, imply approval of the use of the public right-of-way or non-conforming sign. Yep.
Well then, why?
Because they can't apply to the planning commission unless the property owner applies.
Right, so.
So you could not sign it and not have them apply, but there is an existing sign. But that necessarily would come down on it. This is just giving permission for Kim to sign, to go through the process, through the process. So are you saying that you prefer just not to do that?
Why, why would we as a property owner want to apply for variants? I don't, I don't see why we would.
It goes, it signed the application which goes to the planning commission?
I understand, I don't think as a property owner we should sign it.
Sorry. And just to be clear, it's the, the, the interim, uh, just the applicant and their application. They're the applicant for the variants. It's simply, the city is the property owner, it's like any other development application that's going to, sort of, planning commission's review is that the, often the architecture of acts is the applicant, not the, um, property owner who's there. Of property, and the property owner just signing the application so that the agent can present the matter on, on their behalf. So it's, now, this is.
I understand what you're saying, but also as a property owner, if we are not in agreement with the application being submitted, we don't have to agree to it. Is that not correct?
No, no, that's, that is, that is correct. The, the council is not obligated to sign the agreement, the application will not be included in the lease, and then, I guess it won't go anywhere. Until that, until, I don't know.
But that would remove this.
Well, I.
So then there'd be other action, yes?
I think there would be other action too. If that's the, if that's the desire of the, with the council majority, then there would be directions for other action.
Mayor, I believe Mr. Petry is trying to speak and that his mute is perhaps on.
It is.
Can you hear me now?
But if he's talking about substance, we shouldn't have him talk about substance, right?
Can you hear me?
We're just saying permission for.
Sir, just a minute, we can.
We're just asking for permission to.
Yes.
No, if Mr. Petry speaks, he'll talk about the, uh, merit of the application, which we shouldn't be talking about.
Well, I, I don't think we can assume what Mr. Petry may or may not say, see? But, um, but it is true that the point of this evening's discussion is not to discuss, not for any party to discuss or try to make arguments for or against the merits of granting the variants of the matter. It's simply, as the owner of the property, as a majority of the council wish to authorize the city recorder to sign the applications as representative of the property owner, so that the applicant can proceed through a process that involves planning commission review and is potentially appealable to this body at some point, based on what decision comes out of that. That is the only item before the council.
So, let me clarify something. It's going on our property because he has no room on this property, is that correct? You want to put this on? That's, that, we're not gonna talk about the location, we're not talking, what, we're talking about yes or no, can Kim sign an application on our behalf as the owner of the property?
Can anybody hear me? Is anybody here?
We're not, we're not discussing any other thing besides, uh, the action of the city recorder signing a form four if we were not, so.
So there's no reason why I should talk about anything then?
We're not gonna talk about the signs, location, or anything at this time. So at this time, I will make a motion to allow Kim to sign, Kimberly, to sign, our city recorder to sign an application on our behalf, uh, to go before planning commission for further discussion on replacement. Form is signed.
I second that motion.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. To approve Kim to sign the application on our behalf, is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I think it's important that we allow our committees to make these decisions, and, not decisions, but to study these issues and make recommendations to the city council, uh, whether it's marine-oriented like the harbor commission or land use like this. Let's let these committees do their job, that's why we've got them here, thank you.
So, um, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Um, Council Watson, I, well, you wrote a closer name, so the three for name?
I didn't vote name.
So four name, three yes?
I didn't vote name.
Oh, my apologies, did you vote yes? Thank you.
Four yes to.
Four yes to, got it. So the motion is carried. So this will go before planning commission, for them to take action on. Alrighty, um, this is when I really want to get going tomorrow. This abandoned vehicle enhancement code change, has everybody had a chance to read this? So this has really been, um, a hassle, as you all know, going on with the moving of cars and everything. And has everyone had a chance to read the ordinance? Oh, this, we can't do it today, can we? Um, can we do it? It's just. Yes, I went ahead and wrote it up as we could take this one in emergency, there's a provision to allow for that, okay? So we can read it into the meeting record? Right, you can still do it by title only and then adopt it. Okay, so, um, ordinance number three-three-nine dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Depot Bay, amending ordinance one hundred by repealing section nine prohibiting, prohibited parking and adopting ORS eight-one-nine-point-one-one-zero, pertaining to custody, towing, and sale or disposal of abandoned vehicles within the city of Depot Bay. So a motion to accept the, this is an ordinance by title only. It's been moved and seconded to accept ordinance number three-three-nine dash twenty-three as presented. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, open the floor for discussion on the, um, ordinance and the changes that are being asked to adopt tonight. There's no discussion, I'll accept a motion to accept ordinance number three-three-nine twenty-three as read previously by title only, uh, to adopt it as an emergency ordinance to be put in effect immediately. Somebody make that motion, or anybody. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number three-three-nine dash twenty-three. Any further other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor Beasley?
I said aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we will get to this point, so we can do this immediately.
Yes, um, and he's been doing it, but it just makes us get confirmed on it because Brady found his orange tickets, and it references the O-R-S versus our ordinance. But if push comes to shove, our ordinance shouldn't match. So that's what I did. I do want you to know that we are further investigating an issue where the Lincoln, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office thinks that when he posts these things, the guy's been tearing them off. And we've spoken to the sheriff's office, and they feel that tearing them off shows an intent to, the vehicle's not abandoned, but the vehicle is abandoned. So I questioned our city attorney and saying, there's gotta be something that says that doesn't matter if they tear it off, so we can address it. He told me today that he's had a recent situation, and he's figuring out that stuff in the ordinance, no. So I may, I'll probably come back to him to do attorney meetings, more information, and if we need to do anything for that to address us still being a non-ophensive system right now. He goes and if they tear them off, he puts another one up, but it starts to cost. So. So. And I'm like, there's gotta be a way to still do this.
Okay, okay, well, we'll get, we'll get going on this, and thank you so much, that's been wonderful. Um, the first family slide, has everyone had a chance to read that? Okay. Any questions on that? Uh, listen, one, public property, Valerie.
Pardon me, could we get a motion to?
Oh, do you need a question, I'm sorry.
Just to get it onto the record to absolutely confirm to everybody, this is what the council guys finally decided.
Um, okay, is there a motion to accept the findings from Chief Depot that the current location is deserted? In the city park, so in the city park.
So maybe the city park.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to leave the sign right first out in the city park. Any further discussion on the motion?
Or we'll replace it with the corrective.
Yes, oh, yeah, I was ready. That should begin early next week. It's been in probably next week for about two months, you know? I have two things that I have that going on.
Oh, any, um, any other discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alrighty, um, alrighty, and this unpermitted public property. Now you put a letter.
Um, just in our process to try to tidy things up around town and.
Yeah.
Make sure that, you know, if people are using public property, they have permission to do it, preferably some kind of legal instrument in place that protects their interests and their rights for what they're doing along with the city. So there were a few that just, that came to mind, um, that I'm driving around that I noticed. The parking lot down at the end of Shell, um, you know, there's a lot of spots that could be opened up there for future people. If, if it was open, because they have a pretty, like, the parking stands down there, so. And then the other ones are, um, docks on public property that, um, many years ago, they used to be leases for those. And back in the day when we came up with urban renewal and some ideas on how to enhance and improve the harbor, it was suggested at that time that instead of renewing those thirty-year leases, they all had thirty-year leases that came up for expiration, that instead of doing that, maybe do a year lease or a five-year lease. But it fell between the cracks, and there's been no leases in place for the past fifteen-plus years. So now it has cost the city well over a hundred thousand dollars in lost revenue. The folks who are using that space have absolutely no protection at all for what they're doing there, or no agreement. So it needs to get cleaned up, um, and I stuck it in writing, so, yeah.
And I know that Kim wants budget and things her, yeah, but is that one of the type of top of her priorities to look at those?
I also like council direction on, um, this, uh, or not this, uh, the horn, pub, horn parking, AKA Coho. We, it's been surveyed recently, and there is a business is parking their vehicles overnight on public property. And I don't know if you guys want each of this. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes. So I have a few, um, motions related to this. Can I, um, read what I'm thinking?
Sure. Is it, are we?
Read it first, this is agenda.
Right, and, and it's an action, I left it as an action, I'm sure you can take action on it, thank you.
So, um, the first would be to authorize the attorney to draft up new dock leases at the current market rate being used in Newport for private docks and public waterways. Uh, should I read them all, or should we do one by one? Yeah, please, okay. I can't go really fast. Can I take that?
I can give it to you.
And, um, that was a motion, and Councilor, you second it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, okay, so are we gonna read each one then?
Yeah.
Well, now I have four. They're very short.
You should go.
Yeah, well, here's one, okay.
Any discussion on the motion before this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I missed the motion, was a motion made?
Yes.
Councilor Brett can read it again.
Do you want me to read it again?
Please, yes.
Authorize the attorney to draft up new dock leases at the current market rate being used in Newport for private docks and public waterways.
Thank you. Aye.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that is say Newport, Oregon, so.
Newport, Oregon. Well, Newport, California, I do this.
Oh, yeah.
So we should vote on that.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did. Number two, all in favor, okay.
So the second would be to. So the second would be to authorize the attorney to draft up a letter notifying property owners of tax lot, lots sixty-five hundred, uh, seven hundred, seventy-four hundred, seventy-five hundred, seventy-six hundred, that some of it's, it's owned by one owner, Mark and Christine Fay. That some of their personal property, for example, cars and trucks, are on city property and to clear the city land of their items.
Seconded.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Uh, please, second, please, second.
Also Beasley, seconded, okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two, okay, number three.
So, related to that, it would be to authorize Brady to post no overnight parking signs on Shell Avenue, the city's right-of-way.
Second.
Was it permitted above, does somebody have a?
Chief, please.
You seconded, okay, I'm good.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and number four.
So, um, this would relate to the COHO parking lot situation is to, um, authorize Brady to post no overnight parking signs on, um, on that property in the city's right-of-way.
Anything else on the day?
I second that motion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, anybody can vouch for you today.
Yes.
Most of the city parking lots appear to be no overnight parking, you know, the, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, we need to get some upgraded signs for.
So we, there's a motion in the second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty.
I have a question, Mayor. Did we just vote for a comprehensive review of rates and revenue streams with one of those motions? Uh, the one that was, uh, looked at a review of the Newport, uh, rates.
That was for that particular issue, for the leases, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you.
If I, if I could, just something we might have to, thank you, Council Brett, for that motion for overnight parking on Shell Avenue because I learned recently that Brady has had several discussions with them regarding people sleeping, uh, and they have discussed it as being a, um, overnight security and he's
To a, yeah.
And he's been basically told to shut off, like he's tried to enforce this, so this might be a bigger, it might end up being a bigger issue, but that motion and if we're able to get us started with that. So expect to hear more of it. And I really thank Valerie for bringing this, her attention, but I think she's been doing it a long time, it went from part of the harvest commission and made it, this is in 2015, I believe, and it didn't go anywhere, and so, thank you for bringing it up again, this is a lot of potential money on the table, and like you say, security for us, insurance, liability, and liability for the owners.
Okay.
I don't know how to make the motions, sir.
We have some great thank you letters to send out, is it okay, does it need a motion for that?
Uh, no, just Council with her and said it's okay to send those letters out and have her sign them, that's all. And it kind of sounded like you already did that for a specific discussion that you were agreed with thank, thank you notes being sent out.
Okay, we'll go and we'll do that, get those going, thank you for answering that.
Um, rest your own facilities, why would love those, don't we? I did not write your report on that yet, but I can give you some information that I would just like direction on, so there's a couple of options that we can do this. I've talked to our new maintenance worker who's cleaning the bathrooms, and he said that the most common thing that continues to happen is that the soap out of the soap dispenser keeps getting stolen. We have no idea why they should do the soap, it could be related to the issue with the Shell Avenue overnight visitors and guests. That could also lead to why we've been having these problems. But other than that, they haven't had that really bad stuff, so we don't know if it's because whoever did it, you don, or
They're blocking.
We locked them, or what? What I would like, there's a couple of options, I spoke with TCB Security because right now, while we have a wonderful deputy, he's not here at night and he's not here on Fridays and Saturdays. So I talked to them about getting a proposal, um, to either do a hybrid of a patrol person on Friday and Saturdays to be downtown, to do the enforcement of that or, and to have six AM, or six PM to six AM drive-outs, like we would say, check the restrooms, check this area, check this area. Um, for just the patrol that does it at night, if that's what we want to do, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, almost, it's thirty thousand a year. Um, otherwise, then our second option is to just simply say as of a certain time period, the restrooms will lock and they'll open at seven o'clock the next morning, yeah. It does cause a bit of a concern for the fisherman, right? I mean, um, but that's an option if the thirty thousand, we, we feel is too much.
Yes, we could. We could go back to auto locks.
I was announcing about that.
Now that's an option.
Where it locks.
Because a lot of the, a lot of it, it's already there.
Yeah. We would like stronger ones, because I understand that they were broke.
Yeah, we'd have to agree to do something.
Where, where are?
Great.
Auto locks.
They're the government.
They're programmed to open.
Yeah, it's programmed at any time.
I know, so that means I wouldn't have to run down there eight o'clock at night to lock the bathrooms. So, once again.
Is that what you do?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I, I, um, think we talked about security cameras in the parks, in the restroom. And since we haven't had the really awful stuff happening again, I, I really like having a public restroom available for people. You know, there's travelers, you know, it's just, um, you know, they, they can use, I guess, the Royal Bay or the Rocket Creek, um, but this is another option, so unless we would need to lock them down, um, I mean, I guess between midnight and ten PM and, you know, five AM, it's probably not that much of a deal, so I'd be okay with that. But I think security cameras also would go far and may help us protect our park and other things. Or, and just even the idea of a security, you know, this property is under surveillance, sign maybe enough, too.
And I spoke to Lincoln Deputy Casey about it, and he said that the same thing I was saying, well, the security cameras are good, and they'll be a deterrent, but you can't catch them in the bathroom.
Right.
Meaning that, not saying that that's gonna continue, because it hasn't, so, but it would definitely provide a deterrent. So it would be a thing we could try first, because we're already talking about.
Yeah, and then there'd be another, depending where it's put or how many we have, I don't know how we're doing with people paying their harbor launch fees, but, you know, that's another potential for increasing compliance when people think they're being watched. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move ahead with purchasing the auto locks, uh, for the bathrooms. It, and I think that they should be locked right now while we're having this timeframe where it's going on, and maybe they don't have to be locked all the time, but they need to be locked now. And we should have the ability to lock them at regular intervals without expecting staff to go there.
Maybe from nine o'clock to five AM, or not nine, ten, I'm sorry, ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Every night, every time I've gone down there, there hasn't been anybody and it was trying to be closed, you know. Yeah, there hasn't been.
Yeah, yeah, that's. Ten to five, seems reasonable.
Yeah.
What do they do at the dock side bathrooms? Do those?
Um, they just stay open.
Those are open all night long?
We're not having issues there.
They're swiveling.
Right.
But we're also having issues with the purple starfish.
The what?
Oh, no. Purple starfish, uh, what's the W A for that, purple starfish?
Oh.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
The landmark.
Right.
That might be another one to some, at some point, consider locking. We, we got a lot of discussions about that coming up later anyway because that remains, the rest of it is a lot of work.
How, how much is auto locks?
So magnetic, and they just go on a timer.
And how much do they cost?
Um, it was the installation, so a lot of that's there, I could get a, a quote, uh, from a Christian to find out what has been this, for this, there's an emergency release, so if you go in there, say it closes at nine, and then it's nine or five, and you go to leave and it's locked, there's a release button for the magnet, but, um, and then once it closes, it will not, but you have to have a really good return, automatic, uh, return, so it does shut, because right now, with some of the back restrooms, they don't close all the way, the whole wall moves at, at the landmark bathrooms, but these down here are, are set up, or which are probably, they're new doors, so some of the installation, I'm not sure, it costs, um, less than four thousand dollars, uh, to do one set of restrooms. It was like three, three thousand something in economy. So I can get a current quote, you know.
Could you bring the times to me and repeat that?
And then maybe I can, maybe, see what that's gonna entail, but in the meantime, between, um, DJ, our, our, uh, maintenance guy and myself, so we're, we're trying to keep them locked just manually.
And do we have security cameras on, on board?
We do, but they're, um, they're not very good quality, they don't zoom, they're just, uh, really poor at night, they, they look uh, you could see that the, the videos are good in, during the day, but at night, totally poor, so we need to upgrade the quality of the cameras.
And, and Roy, our harbor master, is working on that, he's told me that he's had the latest response from the people to come and give him a quote and to tell what needs to be done. He was hoping to be able to finish it this fiscal year, but it doesn't look like it, it's hard to get response from people, so we'll have to purchase for next year.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
It's in there.
Okay, any other questions on?
Restaurants.
Um, city staff reports, has everyone had a chance to read all of this? Any questions for staff? You see, I, I have a question, um, I really don't know where this national night out came from, I know Kim has put it in the report, but you know, it, um, I just don't know who's behind it and how much city time and effort it's taking and what it's about. Um, we have some nice donations, written at least one charter company that worked for a booing run, which is good, but next meeting is set for mid-June, who's, who's meeting?
It's, uh, me, the, uh, hopefully Brady will be in to this one, the, uh, the fire, what's his name?
Brian.
No, Brian's not in, I think he sent somebody else, but Lynn from the fire, so two fire folks, Carl for the sheriff, if Casey comes. And, um, I'm trying to get the post guard there, and this was just, comes from a wish to do a community event for our community with inviting our people who serve us, the fire, it's, it's a national event, we're making it simple but fun. We're looking for mostly donations, and I'm doing a lot of this on my off time. In fact, I should, I can show you, but we're gonna do a court hall, and my mother made the feedbacks for me, so I'm utilizing my off times to do this, so. I got title raise, going to give us a gift card, trail plans, it's coming to do at least one booing run, maybe more than getting to do it. Um, and, uh, we've got some, that we're gonna do the donkey dirty, and, uh, which Brady already knows how to do. Uh, the air is gonna be fourteen, do a cuddle war, the fire, post guard, sheriff and crew. Our crew, we could do a council once we wanted to. Um, and, uh, face painting, the lady who did face painting, she's gonna be there, so a lot of this, I've been just, we have these meetings once a month, once every other month, and mostly I just do a lot of work my off time.
So, that's fine, just, just want to follow then. Just, um, it would be nice if I came in front of the city, because it doesn't call the city staff, and you know, it's, it's nice at, on your time, but you you know, I don't want you spending your own personal time on stuff either, you know, you, you don't have a lot of downtime, but so maybe in the future, we should have, you know, the council churning out whether we want to get involved or not.
Okay.
Don't play no, it's nice, we're gonna have hot hamburgers, hot dogs.
Yeah, uh, we're just gonna have probably the fire guys and people on both of their teams putting in orders and hot dogs.
I think that's a nice, if we have council meeting scheduled, but we can change that pretty much.
August, first, is that the first Tuesday? Oh, shoot, my apologies.
Right.
We can, we can.
We change it to June. Yeah, we change it to the Fourth of July.
I was hoping, uh, so we can call up.
Should we do that now?
Is, is there, is there a, we'll make it somewhere. Is there a, is there a, is there a, like, oh, but are we the ones buying the hamburgers, or?
We haven't discussed that yet, we'll probably discuss it next time, but I'm, I'm sure, oh, and, and if Casey's helping, I'm sure they will contribute. I just never heard of, I don't know about this, can you just explain, is it for community members or? Yes, so, national night out is a national thing, where they pick the first Tuesday in August, every year where communities around the, not just the state, but around the US, have these little events. Some people, like say, for example, Stonebridge could have had a national night out, partly just their community. So sometimes just communities do it, smaller cities do it, um. I think Selects is doing it, Lincoln City's got one going on, but there's obviously gonna be the bigger scale. Um, but it's, it's a way to bring community members together with the people who serve them. Which is why fire, sheriff and post guard, not normally post guard, because not many people have post guard, that get involved and they do a lot of the, go to neighbor, doing a lot of the work. They'll bring the fire truck, we're talking to them about doing force, so they do a lot of the work. And we're actually going after donations, so we don't have to pay for it. I'm not taking this, I'm asking for donations to do this, not taking money from the city.
I just, I, I also am really concerned about all the staff time that goes into, like, chamber events, cleaning up after. I, I, we, I want to pay more attention to, you know, the staff time that go into these events, I, I've heard there's issues.
The, the problem comes when they don't communicate with Brady what they need, where they just say the day before, we need to put these batteries on.
Yeah.
When they don't tell you, so I'm actually working on something that says, here's what you have to do, first you have to come to talk to city staff, then you have to go in front of the council and say, here's what we want, here's how much of the city staff we want. So they have to actually plan out and then present to you guys, so no more this, that's what's frustrating, is the last minute and a lot of times, they just can't plan for it because they've got things like a broken water, you know, so.
Is there any other questions for project updates soon?
Oh, I do have one for Kane, the auditors were in here yesterday and today, and it doesn't look good.
No.
It doesn't look bad. So.
It doesn't look good and it doesn't look bad?
Yeah, so, he's not sure yet, so the primary was in, I think, and they kind of started with redoing nineteen twenty. And I talked to him, I said, hey, Dr. Yoder guy, because you got all this figured out, so they are worried they're gonna have to, because they can't get the things to balance, uh, doing it adverse on us, basically, instead of a disclaimer, which is originally what I was told they were gonna do. But now it might be had to favor adverse, but the problem with that, and this is what he's working on, is that if they do it adverse, they're saying they don't have faith in our balance and our numbers, which means going into twenty twenty-one, we're already handicapped. So, he's really trying, we're working with, he's working with me to pull reports, looking at the data, we're looking at things, um, he's getting together with Cody, because that was the gentleman who worked him on all this, and I said, how do we answer, he's been, spoken to Rob, our previous CPA. Um, he has some concerns about the things that, that our previous CPA did that don't make sense, so he's trying to, he says, I'm trying to do this, though we don't give you an address. They will be not back, and they'll be back on the twenty-sixth, which is that Monday, to dig into it some more and see what they can figure out, so I'm not happy, I'm not sad, but he's worked, he says we are his priority.
That's good.
Now, who is this, please?
I swear, our, our auditors.
All righty. Uh, are there any closing public comments this evening?
Um, of what I forgot to say with the merger.
Um, of what I forgot to say with emergen-, uh, emergency preparedness. Um, several, several others went up to Stonebridge and they opened their caches. And that was great. We were able to see what it, what it was like and what they have in there. And there's a lot more room than what I thought. But we looked at the uh, fire department, they came up and opened theirs as well. So that gave, gave you a little good idea about what it looks like. That's all I have.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yes, come on up here.
I actually thought of this one uh, a little while ago, the previous public comments was supposed, but regarding the fifty anniversary celebration, I did. I did make it down there for a little bit and it was fantastic. I read all the stuff, whoever did the photos and.
That was great.
Those, yeah, that was.
Can we do the photo, can we do the slideshow?
Collectively, it was a, it was a good deal. Um, I would like to respectfully request that next time the city purchases any kind of T shirts or anything like that. Uh, get some, whatever vendor we go through, I would like to request that we at least solicit bids or quotes from some. You know, apparel, T shirt printer that is unique in the U S. Or uh, T shirts, I did buy a T shirt. I'm gonna wear it to my planning commission meeting. But it was a, you know, I mean, you know, being, wherever, by whoever, and uh, I would like that to be considered.
Okay, thank you.
I had one thing on city staff reports, congratulations on getting some water pipe ready.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, eight inch A C, so tucked in and re done.
Yeah. Yes.
Was it, it, I, I went inside by code and then they were gone. It's like, it going fast.
Yeah, and once they got, yeah, it went quickly once, yeah, I mean, cause we were out flushing the lines after that.
Yeah.
So we had to go deal with fire engines.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Good job, and it really decreased your.
Yes, oh yeah, it was a lot, a lot. So, yeah, so the low tides are a little lower now.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right.
Cause it was.
Cause it was going into motion, yeah.
Yeah. Any other public comments? And girls' comments, do you wanna start?
I don't, I can't.
Okay, Fran?
Yeah, um, I have a few. Um, so this is June and July fourth is coming right up. And I'm wondering if they can inform um, like Worldmark, the um, vacation rental places reminding that there are no fireworks allowed on repo day.
I know.
And that, you know, and, you know, have your guests enjoy the public firework displays. And we can tell them what days and times there are, like a, like a city report, Worldmark. So I could drop something on it that was about staff or like.
That would be lovely, thank you.
And should we put it on our website?
We can put it on the website and we should have social media.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, would it be helpful to have a sign as you enter into Depot Bay or maintenance member? Saying you don't fireworks allowed in our city? That I, it ends on the size of sign, if you ask people about the, how much of A C.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. But you can.
Oh, I like that with Worldmark and also like very flattering, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, cause the people are cooking now, so.
I think they could.
Uh, yeah, probably. Yeah, that's true.
That would be great, that would be great.
So then the other, other sort of, one other thing is, um, you know, we've had this on our, to do this for a while. You know, getting that um, fence removed from neutral, that's on our public volume. And so, and it's not, it's like, I think the estimate in parks plan is, is like two hundred fifty dollars to get that, that um, quite. And Ellison, I'm sorry.
I was, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say.
Uh, sorry, Ellison.
Ellison.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it worked, it worked.
Yeah, we can do that too, but so I'm, I would like to get that opened up, let's do it now, along the.
Yeah. Does that, does that require any kind of real?
Well, we need to find out about that.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
I thought we put it in. There's, it's, it's like two.
Right.
About five dollars, so it's not worth it now.
Well, that's always, since we have the um, engineering staff, we said that the survey capacity, if you need.
Yes, he does, absolutely.
So, cool. Yeah, anyway, that's my call.
I will send that information to John, so he can do it first.
No, I made my um, count, count in the wrong place, it's up at, that's all.
Very productive, me. We always have a lot of things. Councilor B C, any final comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Short, uh, for getting the word out about Depot Bay. I uh, have already noted that you spoke very effectively uh, to the Ways and Means Committee. Uh, about our harbor situation. And then I recently heard you on a podcast with Cara Morgan and had an excellent report on your performance at the Fleet of Flowers. So I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to you for, you know, putting a great face on Depot Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing, the only other thing I have is, uh, I, I've got a notice that was just sent to the state legislature. And it includes all of the public bodies in Oregon that are in violation of O R S two, two nine seven right now. And we know well enough that Depot Bay uh, has not filed its audits in three or four years. But we're not alone on that. There are six other cities that uh, are at least as delinquent as we are. They include uh, Duffer, Fairview, Garibaldi, Mosher and Walport. Uh, and I couldn't help but think that maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to get together with Walport. Uh, maybe encourage uh, our city recorder to find out what they're doing down there. Uh, and see if we couldn't put our minds together and find a solution for this. But I, I do wanna thank her for uh, being diligent about this and pressing forward. I know it's a difficult task, but we have to get this solved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And okay, so our next budget date that we've all concluded is gonna be June twenty sixth at five thirty. Okay. And I have a comment. No, it's in the, it's right in here.
Without it, it's in the page.
Okay, we are done. Thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
Oh, here's our picture, oh, here guys. Here's our picture of all of them. Isn't that great?
Yeah, you guys photographed really well.
Yeah. He was gonna get it.
Uh, it'll be, oh. Center, but I didn't see him.
Yeah.
I didn't see him.
I, I, I had, I had asked for it.
All right, I'm taking a little bit out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, thank you.
No, no.
So is that like, I'm listening.
That's a day.
Yes, I wrote something down for you.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I'll always play.
Yeah, I told me, sorry, my.
Yeah, you get a main point.
Yeah. And I can take a chance to, my, my. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm like, really.
This is our last thing, it's full of.
Oh.
I was just, yeah.
And I was.
Yeah, I was in the end, it's right.
Well, the only thing, I, I know I was, we'd get to go, we'd go on September. And I was staying in the harbor. And, you know, like the harbor system's. We were able to stay there and I don't think that was, it was the. And we noticed nothing, but all was.
So this teacher is still, uh, she has a YouTube channel, it's this one, it's this uh. Yeah, it's, it's just, what, you know, your new, your college, you're calling it, yeah. And you still taught lots of people, you know, and you could go walk them out and go take a walk and do what I. So this is.
Oh my god, I wait, thank you guys.
Yeah, check out one of those.
I will.
He could get a little salty at times, you know.
I know what that is. So do you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'm going, I walk in this like, cause you can't see the birds, especially in spring, it's like, oh my god, there's seven getting birds here.
Yeah. I've got about, I've got a list I've been maintaining at home. I, I, I hear more than I see, the ones that I've seen, I've got about thirty different birds.
That's really cool.
Yeah, I can't hear anymore.
Yeah.
The high and whispers, so it tells me, oh, there's this, you know.
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, yeah.
So this is just, did you see that?
I read it, yeah.
It's, it doesn't apply to us.
I like it.
So if you just wanna just sign it and then send it off to.
I'll sign.
I'm not too interested.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get that little piece of paper with mine? Yeah, I just, it went that way.
It went that way, I didn't.
Did it go this way? Maybe it's Brady and stop. Oh, no, I got it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and Fran, I'm sorry about National Night Out. I should have told you guys about it to make sure it was okay.
That, that's okay, but in the future, because I just get really scared about all the employee talent, that's my name. So yours too, you're, you're totally overcommitted at once.
Yeah, it's fun. I do my off hours, it's fun.
But, yeah, but you know, there's only so much and then it just burn out, you know. And I am out of town on the twenty sixth, but I'll try, I'll try, do we have a zoom in or call in?
I will make one.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm up by Willamette Pass, so I think there's gonna be self-service.
Where's that at?
Up um, on the, Ken, Willamette Pass.
Oh, I don't know, Willamette Pass.
It's where Boonum's here.
Oh, that one, that one I know.
Yeah, so I think I would be in the cabin there, so I'm not sure I'll have service, but I'll try.
Well, I figured I will try to, by all's, get this guys, get this, I told those guys.
Um, so maybe what I can do is if I, if I'm not, you know, and look at it in advance, so if I have any.